Okay, I'd like to call this board finance board, we try.
Let me introduce to society, United States of America, and the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, everybody's on it for citizens, please respect five minutes duration. If you have something to say, you're welcome to say it now. Anybody have something to say? I'm voting as well, so I guess we're moving on to for the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Everybody have a chance to look at? I take a moment. He makes the motion to approve, any second? Oh, second. Motion seconded to approve the minutes, all in favor? All right, I'm.
Yeah, you're on.
Okay, we got the minutes. Um, the last month. At this time, we have someone who would like to do a report for their department. And I would entertain a motion for inserting Jason into the agenda to do a report. So move second. Motion made and seconded to allow Jason to do a report right away. All in favor? All right, you got it, Jason, come on.
Thank you. I can't. So. This is, so I'm here tonight to just go over our handling of money in recreation, how we take it in. That's way, way is clear with everyone. As far as you guys should know anyway, as a board of finance and anyone from the public has any questions about it. Um, so what you have in front of you is a blank registration form. This is our, actually our 2025 fall program registration form. I've used these forms forever. They change with the season. They change when if we're doing a big one-time program, like our after-school program, that's not on this form. Obviously, that's more than just one day, one event. But it's all, it's all the same, similar. So I'm just gonna walk you through it like nobody knows any. I think that's the easiest way. So on the form, participant's name. So Johnny Jones is signing up for a program. Johnny Jones, age ten. So obviously, parents filling out the form. Grade five. Street address, one, two, three Sterling Way, town Onico. Zip code zero, 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 zero. Home phone, doesn't have a home phone. So and we, I look over these forms when we get these all filled in. So, um, home phone, there's either gonna be a number there per phone or I insist to put them, put something on the line like a dash. That way, the line's covered. Cell phone would be mom, mom or dad, whoever's filling out this form. Email would be the parents, one of the parents. Emergency contact pickup person. Not everybody likes to do this. I, I insist on it. I think the worst-case scenario, it's a generic form that we use. If you wanted to fill out and go to a show, I would insist that you put emergency contact on there. You're on a bus, you're away from home, something happens. We need to know to call someone. So name somebody, phone number, address, relation. A lot of times, people put, they fill out the back with three or four pieces, too, which is really good. Next line, is there any other information that you feel that we will need to know when your child does not care? Very important. Um, I know this is in finance, but if everything goes hand in hand. For an example, allergies, medical condition. If yes, please explain. So most common thing is they'll write asthma. Asthma, I know what asthma is. My questions are, okay, do they have an inhaler? Oh, yes, is it on them? No. Okay, so you have asthma, you're coming to a rec program, you know, you're gonna be running, but your inhaler's down. Right, so those are the questions that we ask to get, to prompt other issues, to avoid your issues. Next piece is actual, what do I want to do in recreation? So there's a host of things on here that you can fill out. So typically, it's, it's one form per person, but multiple programs on the same form. So for example, Johnny wants to come to Friday fun night in in September. It's $10. They're gonna check that box, circle the nine nineteen. They also want to come to the special camp day on ten three. Check that box. And they also want to do the bus trip to the Essex train and boat ride, that's $40. So ten plus twenty-five is thirty-five, plus forty is seventy-five. Total that up, they sign it. Parents signs it, parents means it. So now I have either a cash or a check in my hands for $75. You go to the bottom, amount paid would be seventy-five. Circle cash or check. If it's a check, the check number was on there. Initial, because I took it, and then the data we took it. At that point, all these forms and all the money, we take them. So Johnny signed up for three programs. This form gets copied twice. It goes in eight folder per program, which is in my office. We use those folders, like if we're going on a trip, take it, copy the folder, goes with us. Money gets locked up. Typical deposit. I like to do them on Fridays, sometimes the Thursday. Sometimes in the summertime, when we get a bulk of registrations at one time, we do twice a week. But with a similar form. Somebody needs a receipt, very simple. They copy it, they get a copy, we have the original copy. So, so now we have all these registration forms, and we have all this cash and checks. So I did copy this forms for everyone, but this is a log that we use. This is anytime somebody comes in to register for something. It's the date that it's come in, the program it's for, the payment that's made, the type, similar to that form, just a check or cash. It's just another checks and balances we have. That form gets copied along with my deposit. Deposit we do, we do on the computer. So again, going back to this form, this form triggers everything we do on the recreation. So this form, we have six people signed up for Friday funding. There's a line on the form that we use for a deposit that indicates how much money goes towards funding. This one, so all of these programs are listed on that deposit form. So you take, if we took in, say, $2,000 in cash and checks. There's a spot on the form, just for to make it simple, we took in a thousand cash, thousand checks. So we have $2,000 that has to be placed in these programs on deposit slip. That form, it's all done on the computer, it's, um, it's an Excel spreadsheet, so guide you if you make an error, so. Anyway, that's done, that gets copied, the money gets counted. That form you have in front of you, plus the deposit form, goes to Sarah, our treasurer. She double counts it to make sure my math is right. And then whatever she does with it and goes to the bank, that's up to her. But, um, and that's, that's basically it. It's a system I've used at my other job, it works very well. It kind of ties you to everything. When I got here in 2021, I sat with Sherri Susie. We went over how she won, how do you want the deposit done? And it was a similar way. I mean, we have these as a backup. I mean, to my knowledge, it hasn't been any issues. If there's something that viewers of board would like to do differently, that's fine. When we also, when that money comes in, my work is not done, because a lot of that has to match. There's a lot of forms that we use in recreation, but I'm a big paper person, but, um, that money has to get matched to other values or form, another form, we have forms per child. Whether it's our, our biggest season is here. A lot of payments come in, not all the payments come in at one time. So those are all tracked, where if your child signed up and you gave, the campus seven fifty, and you gave the part of a hundred on May first, and then you need another top, another deposit of 200 on May fifteenth. That all gets tracked until everything pays. But all that gets tied to the end of the model. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, I really appreciate you explaining all of this. I think it's, you know, I think the general consensus is you're doing a great job over there.
They wish to keep it up.
And Sarah, you're, you're good with it?
Yeah, the process that we have right now, there's checks and balances. I double count it, he doesn't actually make out the deposit. I make out the deposit. I bring it to the bank, so anything that might be wrong with the deposit, that's on me, not on him. Is the problem that I see, I go see him, we figure it out together, and then I deposit it the way that it's supposed to be.
I'd love to interject. I was at the board, the library board, and I think this is probably why this all started with the my first one, I'm gonna say, I love what you're doing down there. That's where I started when, with the town hall, I used to run the board program. My concern with that was when I heard that you were counting the money and there were people coming in and out, and it was off worth of $13,000. That was my only concern with anything, because I'm looking at it from a tax, from one of the taxpayers' standpoint. With money being on a desk and you're getting interrupted like that, I think any taxpayer would have concerns with that. So that's why I made up the recommendation that we talk about policy with you and, but I thought that was, I thought we dealt with it.
You know, I thought it was all, it was, I thought, I understood that it was something that was being resolved and.
I mean, that, that's, to me, I mean, it's an issue, don't get me wrong. It's not an issue that, it's, to me, it's my issue, something that I'm doing the counting, trying to get it done, and we're very, very busy at times in recreation. I mean, it's, sometimes my office, I had to sit back in my chair and just kind of wait it out. With staff in there.
I want you to know that our concern, if any, would be how can we help you?
I'm just doing it at a different time. I'm just waiting it out.
There's any, any help, but it's after, after typical hours or before typical hours.
It just, it has to be done like that.
Jason, mention the Night Dropbox.
So we all, the Night Dropbox is awesome. So because our office is I won't give too much detail there. The Night Drop, we're using the Dropbox a lot. I encourage parents to use it. It's, it's safe, it's very convenient, because, all right, I can't make it before six o'clock. Okay, perfect, you can come on the weekend, you can come at 7:00 AM, you can come before work, you can come when you're out in town at nine o'clock. It's always there. And the only time I let people know that I don't get it, I get it Monday through Thursday. If they leave it Thursday night, we don't get it until, until Monday morning. But something over the weekend, it's just a phone call. It's just, it's an, it's an awesome tool. So, um.
So, do you mean when they're paying for their?
Paying for anything. Because sometimes our hours don't match, you know, when they're, it's convenient.
Can I ask a question about that? I think a little bit of clarification, just because we all know the budget is confusing. So your budget is almost $200,000. You brought in $100,000. How does, how does that work? Like, that $100,000 in the general fund and your, your budget stays at $190,000?
All right, so whatever, all right, just round numbers, our budget is, say, two hundred. And this is, actually, I'm bringing, it's one more item, like, can I bring this item first and then answer your question?
Sure, yeah.
So our, our task for this budget season was to, to raise revenue of $75,000. Last budget season. We, we, which that money helps to pray the cost of the overall budget. So when our budget is two, we bring in seventy-five, it's really
One twenty-nine.
Really, one twenty, it's really, it's really 125 that the taxpayers pay. This year, in the 2425 season, we exceeded that goal, we brought in $104,879. And that's still, our programs are, I think, high-quality and they're very low-cost. I don't, I don't think we need to up the fees. I, I know my money, but and everything is working, so I don't want to break anything. But we brought in $29,879 extra. That money typically go to, back to the general fund. I'm requesting from the board of finance that we keep that money and it goes into a recreation account, for recreation. And so it came in for recreation, goes back to recreation. And one of the things, you know, some ideas I have with that, because we're a growing department, and I, I've been here for four years, I haven't really touched the part. Where we're very busy to try and get these programs up and running, get, get the clientele, get everything established. But there are issues at the park.
Issues in what?
There are issues at the park that want to be addressed. The playscape is, I brought people out there to look at it, playground companies. And they're all for, you know, we don't want to piece it together, take it apart, get a new one. I mean, it's the business, you know, I don't think we need to do that. But there are items on the playscape that need to be replaced and actually. So that's one of the ways I would use that, part of that money. And I'm really, it's taken me a long time, it's on my list, but the field. The field over there, it's, we have a field. I want to turn it to a model. Cut the diamond out. We've had requests for men's softball, co-ed soft, so which will be cutting the diamond out the first. Women's softball, co-ed softball, adult softball, girls softball, and Little League. And they're all different, they're all different, uh,
Different towns?
Well, it's all different, different size, it's all different size fields. So, and I really want to showcase that, that's the center of the town. I've been talking with our CPW foreman, we get along very well, they do an unbelievable job with three men. And now I'm throwing in more work for them. But, um, but it, but it is, it's costly, but it's not. We can do a lot of it in-house, but I'd like to do the final with a, a landscape company. But, um, I haven't gotten prices yet, because we didn't really have the money. So I figured, you know, if we have some money coming in, I can start working on that. But I really want to showcase that. And the funds are tough to get. So especially in, in a small town. The other piece of that, what I'd like to utilize the money for would be unexpected busing costs that come on. As, as hard as I try to be efficient and use our local bus service, which is number one, it doesn't always happen, because you can't always put a driver in the seat. So it is challenging. I'd like to use some of that money for that cost. And I'd like to use a small portion to help with families that can't attend our programs. There are a lot of kids out there who have challenging situations. And if my goal is for that, for those kids to be able to pump their out, bottom line. And I think everybody should have the opportunity. We, and there's more than you know, that just don't come because we can't afford it. And it, it really breaks your heart when you hear some of these stories. I never grew up like that, like kids don't grow up like that. So I can't really relate, so if it does, it really bothers me. And as little as I think, you know, it's not that much money, to some people it is. Sometimes I could pay the change. You know, so it'd be nice to put some of that money aside that, that we raise in recreation to, to go for families that, that could be, that could attend. So I don't know what the opposite would be for.
To clarify, your budget's really $300,000?
No, our budget's, our budget is, say, $200,000. And then the other, the revenue that we bring in helps to pray the cost of that $200,000.
Right, but I, my understanding, what maybe I'm confused, my understanding is what you were just saying is the money that you're bringing in, the revenue that you're bringing in, you want to put that back into the rec department?
No, 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 what I'm saying is, round numbers again, the budget's 200. We are, our goal was to meet, our expected revenue was $75,000 to bring in. At that point, that $75,000 goes against that 200. We've exceeded that by $29,879. I'm looking to take that two, $29,879 that we've exceeded, to put that back into a recreation account. Am I saying, am I saying it right, or?
If, if.
If I'm not, you tell me, because I, I know what I'm talking about, so.
The transfer of funds may total to $300,000, but the town's expense on it is not $300,000.
It's still a $300,000 budget.
So the way.
Even though the rent.
The rent would cost out of here.
When, here's a question, when you made your deposits, where, where do they go?
So the way it works is when the deposits come in, there's one side for operating budget and there's one side for rec activities. The rec activity side offsets the cost of the rec programs, like the Act of the Bell, and the Millennial, and I can think of.
All right, so the rec activity side, that's basically some of the accounts on there are Broadway shows, field trips, t-shirts. So when a child signs, when somebody signs up for a Broadway show, I have to purchase those tickets in advance. So I'd say, round numbers, say it's been $1,000 on a Broadway show. That money will come in as people purchase tickets. Won't come in all at once. If, if all of you wanted to go and if all of you want tickets in a different week, then that money would trickle in to go against that, that thousand that we gave. That's the rec activity side, so it's really, I use the wrong terminology here, but it's more of a pass-through, where that money gets, it, like using a charger. And that money gets diverted back to the rec.
How were you, how were you paying for that before?
Before?
Before when you do these activities now, how were you, how were you paying?
You mean like a trip?
Yeah, how do you do that now?
Now, we, we book, well, it depends. Like a show, when we have to purchase tickets in advance, it comes to that account. Other times, and mostly in the summertime, when we go on most of our trips, we book the trip, we schedule it, we don't have to pay, so we actually go. So there's no money exchanged in the engine, so that, that trip account gets built up. And then when we go in the summertime, it just gets taken off. It's just an expense at that point. So we're actually paying for the amount of kids that go. So that trip account should always be positive, should never be negative. And the opposite side is the operating budget, and that's basically the peeling down each line that, that we have.
So you want your own recreation account? Like you want your own, like, like we have general funds and, you want your own recreation and you would be the one handling that? Or Sarah would be handling that?
What, you mean, you're talking about this right here?
For what we've been talking about, didn't you say you wanted your own?
So I'm looking to take the $29,879.
And create another account?
And put it into a capital account.
It was just for recreation.
Yeah, it's for recreation.
Okay, and you would be handling that account?
I would be in charge of it, but nothing gets handled without going through our finance director. And I meet with Link on a weekly basis. And he knows pretty much, if we're gonna spend something major, nothing's spent without asking him what he thinks. We talk about it, sometimes he has a different idea than I do, which is good, because he's, he's my, my, my sounding board. And I plan to do that with, with the next personalization next year.
How, what about another, because I know you don't have a recreation board anymore.
Right.
And what about something like that to, to do the same thing you're doing with Link or the new company?
The issue with that is, they meet once a month. And when I first started here, we did have a board. And I realized I was new and I had to clear everything with them. But the date, a lot of it's day-to-day operations. When you're meeting once a month and you have to wait everyone, and then all of a sudden, you don't have a meeting, everything changes, you miss a lot.
Yeah.
So the day-to-day, I, that's where I started going to Link and we just, you know, we, we go through everything that gets done. All the major purchases, nothing's done without, without his blessing. So the day-to-day operations as far as whether it's paper or prices or stuff like that, that's, that's nothing, it's in our budget anyways.
It, it would occur to me that the kind, the kind of thing you're doing is funnel through the board of selectmen, basically. We approve general overall budget, where you're at the macro level. It seems to me the way a board, even if few people would help you, is to make that decision about how to use the money and pass it through the board of selectmen, because they're your boss.
Right.
And, but the people have had a chance to say something about it, because they've, they've been selected or appointed to a board. That at the micro level, because you still be waiting for a month to give us, you know, if you wanted to make some changes, it doesn't make sense to come all the way to the board of finance for it.
If I could make a comment about that thought, I would liken that situation about having an additional recreation board, you used to call it Recreation Authority. That would be similar to having all the day-to-day operations that operate here have to go through you, through you folks once a month. That's how, it would be very much the same thing. There are a lot of day-to-day that come, that we do every day, because we have to operate.
Well, that depends on the, on how you set up the board. If the board is not, if the board is for policy decisions rather than monetary day-to-day activities, and that is for, that is a purpose, then the purpose is to have some judgment on, that even bounces a plan off of at the policy level. And okay, that's good policy, go ahead and do it. Then he doesn't have to come back and say, well, I made $10 every time he makes, you know, a report to the board. I, I don't know, I just, I mean.
If based on past experience.
Based on past experience.
That.
Well, I don't have that.
That policy turns into complete oversight.
Oh, really?
And that is where it gets sticky.
Okay.
Because first of all, he's quite qualified to make those decisions with the help of the board of selectmen.
Okay.
That policy board, they're just, it, it's just, I think it's an extra layer that in, as in past practice, simply has not worked right.
Then if the system that you have, you feel is working right, I am, I'm, I'm hesitant to make a policy decision for, for a program that you're charging. If, if it's in, you know, it's a minor thing, just to take money he's making and put it into a different account. That's, that's, who came up with the, the $75,000 money, you know, amount that he's supposed to pick back to the town?
Wait, no, it wasn't the board telling you. No, so when I first started with Sherri Susie, with the, with the treasurer, we met and she had told me, you have to bring in this much revenue.
Oh, she had told you?
And it wasn't seventy-five, it was actually put in place before me, you know, I think it was like forty or forty-five.
Okay.
And then we started to generate more revenue, because we had more programs and more kids and, and more people. So as we made the seventy-five, she increased that to seventy-five during the budget time. And she asked me, can you hit it? I said, you know, I, I think we can. So it's been seventy-five since, I think Sarah leased it to eighty-five this year. And that's kind of how it's been there. So, and I was told, I said, what happens if we get more? We make more, can we, can we, because that come back to us to spend? And, um, she said we'd have to go through the board of finances, so that's why we have.
I'm still on the idea that Sarah is saying you have to make eighty-five. I'm not quite sure who determines that policy.
So that was, so that was when we were going through the budget. That was the budget season, we were going through the projected revenues. The proposed revenues for 2025, 2026. So I increased that because we had hit $75,000, but we were only at, I think, $76,000 at that point. And because I was so new, I wasn't sure what programs we had going on in the spring, what we, what we were gonna take in, or anything like that. So I did increase it by $10,000, only because we were only at $76 at that point. This coming budget season, we might increase it, probably $100,000, because we've been consistent. This coming budget season, we might increase it, um, probably a hundred thousand because we've been consistently taking in quite a bit of money.
Just, but, but if, when you increase it, shouldn't that go through the board of finance, I'm a little confused.
So, when we do the budget, I propose the budget to you guys.
And his budget is in now?
It is.
Okay.
So, his budget is in the expenses and then his revenue is also in the expenses. He's almost at the bottom.
But now that he wants, not that you want, I, I, I didn't ring the words the way that you're not, you want. Cause I'm very, very pleased what we're doing with the rec program, and I think it's excellent, I wish my kids were still little, cause they'd be down there driving a great.
Thanks.
But, but now with us possibly creating another college. And that'll be all within your decision-making.
So.
You're gonna raise it or not?
Yes, so everything that comes through for the board of selectmen budget, the board of selectmen revenues, anything that we're doing in budget season. I've been working with the board of selectmen to come up with those figures. So, we sat down quite a few times to come up with the different figures. I know last year when we were there, when we were going through the budget, I said that I increased the revenue by about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand overall. Because they were lower numbers already in there. I mean, we brought down the expense, the expenses, just to get the mill rate down. So, I've been working with multiple people to do that, I mean, I sat with Bob at one point and we went through it. Um, I've been working with all the different departments to project what we're gonna make for that next year.
Alright.
So, it's not just a blind guessing, yeah, you're, make seventy-five thousand, no.
And then there's a challenge too, minimum wage has increased each year since I've been here.
Yeah.
And it is going up again.
It's going up beginning of January, which is not, we weren't planning on, so, this.
What's your opinion, sir? Does this also coincide with every year that the budget for the rec department increases as their expected money to come in increases? Seems that both sides seem to increase.
Well, on the.
It's two-hundred and something thousand now, when it started at one-thirty.
On the debit side that we exceeded to two thousand dollars that were given.
The two thousand?
Two hundred.
Two hundred, I'm sorry, I was like, wait a minute. I was like, holy cow, um, no, we come in on the budget.
See, so, so the, 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 the debit that the town has has not gone up, it's stayed at two thousand, right?
So, every year.
Started at one-thirty.
You've gotta interpret myself.
One-thirty to two-hundred.
So, every year as the cost of the recreation program goes up, the expenses and what we ask for in the recreation department goes up also.
Okay.
So, a minimum wage is sixteen thirty-five now and it's going up to seventeen dollars next year, we have to increase the salary because we have to pay those employees. If the cost of the toilets, the porta-potties down at the park is one hundred dollars this year, but next year it's gonna be two-hundred-and-fifty. We have to increase that, so all the expenses do increase as the cost of living and the cost of those expenses goes up. But what I'm trying to do and what I hope to do in the next few years, as long as you guys all have me. Is increase those revenues while that expense line is also going up, so we're trying to, trying to offset it, but.
Let's, let's talk about some nice round numbers, this gets back to your comments.
Okay.
Um, fine item, round number, two-hundred thousand dollars. Seventy-five thousand of revenues there for the taxpayers are on the hook for a hundred and a quarter. Yes?
Correct.
Okay, so, back when it was one-thirty, what were the revenues, what were the taxpayers on the hook for back then? Were we, forty?
Forty, something, yeah.
For, so, so ninety then. And so, we've grown over some period, I don't know what period of time is by the way, but we've grown over some period of time from ninety up to a hundred and a quarter. Some, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and you may or may not find that to be reasonable, but you brought up the hundred and thirty number, I wanted to make sure this is actually two elements, that number, it's a revenue and then there's an expanded revenue line. That's all.
One-thirty and then forty.
But.
Seventy, now we're at two.
Also, the program is like two-hundred and nine or two-hundred and eight or something.
And can we clarify the revenue offsetting that, I think, like what Jason was saying?
And then.
Is up to a hundred thousand.
If he's bringing in a hundred thousand and the expected revenue is eighty thousand, he wants to take that twenty thousand and put it in a capital account. For more improvements in the rec department, so then technically the budget is two-hundred-and-twenty thousand.
Well, well.
He brought in eighty, he brought in eighty, alright.
He brought in a hundred.
If he uses that whole.
He, he, he uses that whole.
Yeah.
For the projected revenue, there's twenty extra, that twenty goes into a, an account, capital account. So, technically, and maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but to me, it seems like technically, the budget is really two-hundred-and-twenty.
It will be as long as he's got the twenty in that account, he may not have twenty in that account every year.
Correct. Correct.
So.
I think you managed, right?
Yeah, if, if, though the entire value of it is the three hundred thousand.
Yes.
The whole, the, the value of the program because of the programs you're putting, putting on and the one, and the money you wanna invest, it's like any business.
Correct.
You know, you may not have a nickel in the bank, but your business is worth a million bucks, cause you got it all fluid, you're using your money.
When I started here, it just, the after-school program, for an example, we had eighteen kids.
You had what?
Eighteen kids.
Eighteen kids.
Um, it's a year-round program. We are charged to staff it with a one-to-ten ratio. Um, it wasn't a big budget when I started. I, I take pride in what I've done, I've grown the program, right now, we're at, as of today, forty-three kids in the after-school program. That's one-to-ten ratio.
Mm-hmm.
We're here a hundred and seventy-five days, three hours a day, I have to have enough staff. I can do one of two things, I can cap the programs. Which means, what I'm telling kids after, say, say thirty kids, you can't come. I don't wanna do that, I don't believe in that, I think we have a big enough space here, I think we have enough knowledge between myself and my staff, we have enough need for the program. If we went to a hundred, that wouldn't bother me at all. Um.
A hundred, a hundred.
Hundred kids, we can manage it, we would just need staff to do that. With staff comes in growing budget, and that's what happens. And as minimum wage has increased, it was, I think, thirteen dollars when I started, when we had seventeen. It's four dollars an hour, times a person, times three hours a day, times a hundred and seventy-five days. We've instituted special, we call them special camp days, which are days when, alright, there's a special development day in school. And there's no school in Paris, like, what do I do with my kids? There's nobody here, we have the space, we have the staff, we charge them twenty-five dollars for the day.
Could you increase what you're getting, what you're getting from the parents? Especially when, when the, the, what, minimum wage goes up?
Could we, we could increase it.
To like offset some of the money for the taxpayers?
We could, I, I just, you know, some people have it, some people don't, you know, um, I, I see it.
Basically.
You know, it's just, um, I don't think we need to personally.
I think, I think we may be missing the intangible, and that is the, the enormous service that the town is getting for the money it's spending. You know, you, you know. What other program could you be spending that little on and it affects so many people?
Well, what is it compared to Plainfield, what are their better?
I don't, I don't know, huge, as far as, I know they.
Gun prices.
I don't know up there what they charge, I know they're more money than us.
They are a lot more, they, they a lot more or like in the neighborhood?
I, I don't know, I don't know, I don't, I don't like to compare myself, I, I think, might say myself, our department, I would put up our department against anybody in the state. As far as what we offer, what we offer and what we provide. Um, I'm very proud of that, I'm not trying to seem cocky, but I've been doing this a long time. And I think that we provide an excellent program, and it's not just, it's my staff, the kids come from my staff.
I, I have a, um, a suggestion, if, if it's, you know, if it's something that we can consider. Up to this point, your oversight has been the board of selectmen, right? Yeah, and they're making all the granular decisions about how you operate. And the, the treasurer has been making granular decisions, inviting you to spend more, to earn more money. And, and that, I, I, I flatter for that as well. I, if, other than having a, um, a policy of the, from board of finance. I think the policy should be to continue as is, the people are represented by the board of selectmen. You make decisions about, in oversight about how he runs his program, he makes suggestions to you, you can be old or not. The, the money runs through the treasurer, I think if we start getting granular about every little thing that goes on in town. I, I, we're just gonna tie ourselves in knots, and if it's working, why fix it?
The only, the only thing that I have a concern with, and I'm looking at it from a taxpayer's lens.
Yeah.
Is the way the money's being counted, I know, I think, I trust them, and they, I think, probably a lot of us, I don't know, but. People run and stuff like that, and they're gonna say it's a lack of transparency.
I think that if, I mean, if he's got a paperwork, I mean, that's the.
One of the things we could do, if you, if you wish, I don't agree with it, I don't, I think it's a bad idea, but it's as an option, is go to an online system. And you don't take cash, you don't take checks. Um, I think we would have a lot less people, I think we're more inconvenient for a lot of people, we get a lot of people at the, like, overnight of a program.
Right.
It's, it's. I just wanna get this, I just wanna get this point across. Truthfully, I trust you, and if you guys wanna run with it that way, that's fine, I'm trying to protect what other people in the town might say. And that's the only reason why I'm bringing it up.
What, I have a question for, for Sarah, how do the auditors look at the way it's being done? We're paying the auditors to decide whether the things are kosher.
I mean, I haven't asked them, they haven't said anything about it, to me at least, um.
I know in banks, there should be a couple of people counting the money, and I know there's suggested procedures within our statutes. That it, it should move, like, the person who's collecting all the money should bring it somewhere else to be counted thoroughly out. I mean, I'm not saying when you collect a hundred dollars that you don't count it, but once you get all that, you bring it to somebody else and they fill out the form that you already filled out. It, I know it's a lot of steps, but in today's day and age, I mean, people are the first ones to point fingers. I mean, you, you even talked about when I said to you that I didn't find the way you're counting money, I don't think that's right. You run away thought I was thinking you were stealing, or.
Well, it's because the procedure works, the process works.
But I was, I was also a taxpayer at that point, so, if you look through the lens of other taxpayers in, in the town. And they, they hear that sort of thing, I think.
Well, I think what he's doing tonight is explaining the procedure.
Right, I, but I still don't think the procedure is, oh, that's just my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going by a bank and.
I have a question, are you just saying that maybe a third person should be in the, um.
I think he should collect the money like he does, but instead of counting it all down there, maybe bring it to you to count it, so there's a couple.
So, I do that, so he counts it and then he brings it to me and I count it and then I deposit it, so we have two people counting it. So, I verify what he's counting and I'm the one depositing it, depositing it into the account. So, we have, we have the chain of the two people, if you're gonna add a third person and that might do a little bit.
His records have to match up with the cash that he's giving you, and that cash is given you, you have a, throw him another copy or you have a way to verify that, right?
That form that got passed around, I made that just recently and we just recently instituted that as just another step in the process. To try and cover not only his, but my, but also.
You mean the second one?
Yeah, the one with all the boxes, that one.
Yes.
Yep, so I made that, Bob had actually emailed me, um, can't remember if it was a statue or.
O, O M B recommendation for how to man, manage cash.
Yeah. Right, and what we're doing actually coincides with that.
Yeah.
So, he takes the money, he fills that out, he counts it, verifies it, um, envelopes it up, closes it, brings it to me or it gets dropped in the night box, I get that money. I double count it, verify it to what he gave me for the paperwork, make sure it's all correct, and then I deposit it into the bank.
So, we've got two full-time people we're paying to look at the money.
Right.
And, and if we interject somebody else, we're gonna have to pay them too, so how much, how, what's the law of diminishing returns on this? I mean, I don't want anybody.
You're reading my budget, right?
What?
Reading my budget, right?
I just.
We have to, we have another person, cause then it would go up, I think you get so.
But all I got is too many.
Now, I, I think that if we're, we're doing according to that statute that I mentioned, and everybody's, um, comfortable with it. I s, I say still, if it ain't broke, I don't think it's broke, I think maybe there was some misunderstandings about, you know, clearly. If you, if you announce a chaotic situation in a public situ, public hearing or a public meeting, they're gonna be interpreted wrong.
Right, that meeting that we had was with the library, yeah, and it was about space.
Right.
Because the program is growing, um, like I said, forty, forty-three kids ages five to twelve. I wouldn't want my five-year-old playing with a ten-year-old, so, you know. And there are times when we can't use the outside, where it's raining or it gets dark at three o'clock or, you know, um, so that, that whole meeting was about space.
Right.
And I think that's been rectified this past week, then Link had mentioned to me.
I'm sure.
That, um, and that will help, that will help with everything, so that, and that will help with a lot less traffic in the office.
So, you don't have any more traffic coming in while you're counting the money?
Um, I can make it so I don't.
I, I think if, I mean, if that's, you can make it that way, I think it would be an easier time for it.
Yeah, I can make it so. And if we do, and if, you know, and, and that's on me too, as far as, and I was, maybe going to the extreme with that, you know, um. But I understand, but it was, but my point is, we are busy and we're very active, um, whether it's kids or parents or, um, the phone ringing, you know, and it seems like, I mean, as you know, everything happens at one time. You know, so.
Well, we don't want to have.
And I would never put myself in that.
We don't, we don't wanna have errors or omissions, um, butchered program or anybody's program in general, now I think that's what we're addressing.
Yeah, that's exactly.
And I appreciate it.
I do think, I do think the steps that you've taken, you, you read the statute, you applied another form and you coincided a little better. I don't know, what else can we can ask, you know, or?
Did, did you wanna count the money?
Well, I'm not mad at the difference, but I'm just curious.
You asked if you wanted to count the money.
I have a forty-three students, we have forty-three students, uh, that are at the program. Strictly Sterling students, not just over the line or anything.
No, so, for the after-school program, um, you have to be a Sterling resident, so it's not, so we, we have kids.
So, in summer program, you don't have to be?
Some appropriate resident, yeah, we have non-resident. Non-residents always get charged, um, I can actually give you a copy of the form, but non-residents, for the exception of like a play or a trip or something, they're always charged an extra charge.
Are you using the tax paid rushes for some of the day trips for the kids?
Um, or some can?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, and I can explain that as well.
No, I, you don't have to explain, I'm just, I don't know if that's like a.
It's an issue, I don't like to do it, um, we have a good.
Just because the state line exists.
So.
Anyway, that's probably.
Your favorite thing.
Rolling, happy rolling.
Um, okay, one, one question, Pete.
A quick one.
Uh, in reference to your summer program, just so that you know, I mean, what was that, a hundred and ten, a hundred and ten, twelve kids? Just for the summer program, it was phenomenal, oh, I, I got two grandkids. And as far as the cost, you, you was correct, he's, he's got a, he gets people from outs, outside Sterling. Plainfield, I, I just, I mean, you got forty-three now, but we had a hundred and ten.
Forty-three in the after-school program.
A hundred and ten for the summer program.
A hundred and ten in the summer.
We have nothing but encouraging words for you.
Thank you, when I started, you were under forty in the, in the summer program, so.
How many did you have?
Under forty, we were at one.
Under forty, we were.
We were, we were at forty to begin.
With a staff of twelve, correct, thirteen?
Uh, we have twelve staff members, they don't always, they have some work communities, they don't.
Bob, how they do it, I don't know, I, I have watched it, how they doing it.
Can you give preference for the Sterling kids for the rec, for the counselors?
Um, I'd like to keep everything local. Um.
That was just a, a disaster.
Yeah, I, I, but, I, again, it's, it's not an easy job, it's an active job, it's not for everybody and. So, and I have to manage that, so I, I hire the best qualified, but it goes out to Sterling first.
They're good, they're good with your kids, I, it's just.
So, is there anybody else on staff that collects money?
Yes. So, um.
Good question.
So, I can't be here all the time, and we have things going on all the time, typically six days a week where money can be collected. So, we have. I'll keep it quick, but just to answer your question, with our after-school program, we have a part-time coordinator who runs the after-school program. They, when some people come in, um, to pay, they can either pay her or they can pay me.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in the, if for some reason I'm not here or she's not here and people wanna pay, they do pay the lead staff person. That lead staff person, you have the sheet, I think, fills out that sheet to whoever collected it and they initial it, just like everybody would, so you know who took it in. Um, we do have a program that we do on. Um, we do have a program that we do on Saturdays. It's called. Um, called Cash Club. There's an acronym for it and I can never remember it. It's Community and then there's three other letters, but um, but it's dropping. Um, we have an open gym that we've instituted for kids and parents and that's on a Saturday morning middle school. I'm trying to bolster up this middle school program. And um, but that's all dropping. So it's it's five dollars for um, for a resident and it's ten for a non. But that's typically in in cash. The staff members, my design is to have three staff members, two people on, but three people involved. So it's like a rotating schedule, cause nobody wants to work every Saturday. But come drop-in time, I'm dropping off my child, it's five dollars, I sign them in. It's all recorded. Um, so we have a um, we have an attendance list and we have an amount that they pay, so it's always five dollars.
These people are trained in the procedure.
Yes, yes.
And they're responsible for reporting that money and.
And it's a paper trail.
Paper trail.
Yeah.
So, um. Uh, is. Is there anything to make a motion on except to?
So we're just gonna turn this all over to the like, the like that we're doing before?
We're not turning it over.
Well, okay, so we're. Keep it as it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so the question on the twenty-nine thousand. Is that something that?
I I think that's that's a an executive decision by the board, how you spend the money, how you provide the money, how the town gets the money back. It it's, it doesn't affect the expenditure funds that the board would control. You're still. Even though you maybe have a three hundred thousand dollar program, you're still do work within the budget. That has been proposed for you to spend and approved by the board and voted on by the town. So at the at the pro- at the policy level, it's it's like you running him, you know, the town crew, you know? You don't come in and say, you know, can I give this guy a week off or something? You know, that's up to you. And so I think.
The motion would be to keep that the way it was. And even with the capital account, it would.
Go through.
I don't think we, I don't think we need a motion. I don't think, I think we just heard the report. It seems, I mean, I'm, I don't wanna speak for everybody, but it seems like it's working in a reasonably um, justifiable way. Um, what are we, what are we doing? You know, what action should we be taking? You have a question and please move on, we got other things to do.
Just a question on the out-of-town kids that come in, do they pay pay full tuition or do the taxpayers pay five or ten towards their. Tuition to come to the summer program? Um, you said there's out-of-town students that.
Alright, so alright, so for rates.
They pay a full rate.
So a rate for a.
Or does the town have to pay two dollars, three dollars towards that?
No, so I can. No. So a Sterling resident comes in and pays seven hundred, one child pays seven hundred and fifty dollars to register for summer camp. That includes all the trips, their T-shirts, they all get free lunch, covers the transportation, it's the full boat. An out-of-town person from Plainfield, you know, a lot of Plainfield kids, by the way, um. They they wanna come in, single child, wants to go for the whole seven weeks, they pay eight fifty. So, which they get the same things, covers the trips, the T-shirt, the lunches are all paid for, the transportation. Um, so we actually generate an extra hundred dollars plus the non-resident. Does that get to your question?
What is the, what's the?
The parents pay the full amount, the taxpayers don't.
What is the, what is the full amount per taxpayer plus parent for that single student? To come to the summer program? In a, in a, in a grand total with taxpayer funds and their funds.
I'm not following you on this.
A thousand? Is it, does it cost a thousand dollars per child? But the taxpayers are putting the bill on this part to help the Sterling students to pay only seven fifty. But then it.
Their their fee helps the program. Their fee is revenue. The tax dollars is for the complete budget, what it costs to run the program. For the salary, for the, you know, salaries of all the counselors and his salary and that kind of stuff.
So there's no breakdown of it?
No, because that's revenue. You know what I mean? Yeah, like a.
At school, pay the tax costs or something.
So, no, no, that's no, no.
About, about. From this unit. Yeah, that's what you're trying to.
No, that it's, it doesn't, it doesn't work like that.
That's that, to pay a hundred dollars a week, full-time care, that is, people pay a hundred dollars a day for daycare.
Right.
Yes.
So that's absurdly cheap.
And we're not as, we're not to wear a recreation book, which is a little.
Right.
But it is.
Yeah, it's absurdly cheap.
It is. But again, yeah, I'd rather have it, more people and charge this and up the rates and have less people and people can't afford it.
Where the Board of Finance would have representation to, to the citizens would be. If you proposed a budget that increased his program to three hundred thousand. That the town was gonna have to pay out of its budget, out of the taxpayers' pockets. You brought it to the Board of Finance to say, you know, this this is part of the budget, do you approve or not? We can go in at a granular level and say, wait a minute. That's too much on anything, not just his program. So there, we have oversight, sorry. I don't think we need double oversight, capital letters, quadruple vision. To get down to that level of what you're doing. I I just, it gets, it's, it's too much.
Quite honestly, this all came just because somebody asked, where's the oversight?
Yeah.
Oh, we overlooked that.
This huge thing.
Part of the oversight. Um, okay, so the oversight, basically, the answer is the Board of Selectmen. And uh, would we move the Board of Selectmen to, I guess, announce that? I don't know. Have we answered this question about the twenty-nine thousand dollars? Yes, and what was the answer? Board of Fin- Board of Selectmen has the power to say what, oh, you said the board, I wasn't sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This one or yours?
They're gonna set up a new account. That's what they're gonna do.
Right. If I make sure that.
That's not, I mean, you set up a counter for them, right?
Yeah.
So, do we, do we, are we okay with that, guys?
Yeah.
Alright, now we're, we're getting into the territory. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. I don't see, you know, anytime I'm glad everybody asks the questions because it really, it set, I hopefully set everybody's mind.
Questions are good, Jason.
Yeah.
It is.
And right now, we've.
They need the answers eventually.
We've collected fifty-six thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars so far and we're in September, so we're on a good track right now, so.
And and just like, just like you did tonight, if you have a question about what we're worried about. Or if you have a question about what you wanna do in a, in a policy way.
Yeah.
Well, again, come and see us.
Thanks, thank you.
Hope we get on the agenda.
Thank you.
We know you very much, that's alright. I'm glad you came.
Thank you.
Alright. Unfinished business on August fif- August thirteenth. This discussion that we've been having ongoing regarding creating, creating new capital or and or contingency accounts. I'm going to just quickly zip through the what the heck we're doing this for and get right to people who wanna make proposals to this. Sterling Board, uh, the Sterling General Fund balance is in excellent shape. And I think Sarah can bounce with that. The General Fund balance is largely composed of taxpayers' money. Money citizens have already paid. In addition, our Gen- General Fund gathers interest that contributes to a small but steady growth toward maintaining a safe balance. Against catastrophic economic sur- circumstances. Another factor contributing to the General Fund's strength is due to the federal RBA allotment. The Board of Selectmen was able to complete a host of town improvement projects without needing to draw to the General Fund as once anticipated. The growth and health of the General Fund over the years has far exceeded expectations. It may be time. Put this asset to work directly benefiting all the citizens of Sterling. It is inevitable that due to inflation and other economic forces, the cost of providing town services, along with everything else. Is likely to rise each year. In order to meet this challenge, the Board of Finance is proposing. The development of a plan for the judicious employment of a small portion of our town's General Fund balance. Toward moderating the need for annual mill rate increases. While maintaining a healthy reserve, we would seem prudent and fair to apply some that already paid taxes. Before raising new taxes for things that must be purchased. So. Follow-up to our previous discussion. We uh, we have empowered the Board of Selectmen and the Treasurer and our discussions. Produced the, there, you know, the desire to make some kind of a plan to present to the Board of Finance. And stop talking and start doing, right? So, uh, and now I'll turn it over to Lincoln Sarah, whoever you wanted to do this, to talk about how are we going to actually put it in practice. Don't blame them. Currently, we have capital accounts. In addition to the regular line item for the budget. Capital accounts right now are re- reevaluation, facilities maintenance, buses and vans, IT hardware, IT software. Emergency account was a big mystery. None of us know where it came from or how it's supposed to be spent. We've done some research, we still don't know. And what we're proposing is in addition to those accounts, to create one specifically for road resurfacing. We would, what we would do with these accounts, these accounts, I'll, forget about the road resurfacing for a moment. The ones I just mentioned are funded through the General, the Selectmen budget. Every year, we decide how much we can spend on, to put into the equipment and the revaluation. That's money that comes out of the budget. This, um, our proposal is to create this one new account. And to fund those accounts, not from the budget, but from the budget surplus, or referred to as the fund balance. We have some numbers that we would like to see addition added to it. This is all for your approval. We would like to add fifty thousand dollars to the reevaluation account. We'd like to add five hundred thousand dollars to the facilities maintenance account. That facilities maintenance account, by the way, is for any town-owned building, including the school. We would like to add one hundred thousand dollars to the equipment fund. We would add two hundred thousand dollars to the buses and vans. Buses and vans, by the way, we have, we have budgeted a hundred and thirty-five thousand this year. The budget, the new bus is gonna cost us a hundred and forty-six. That's how much they've gone on. IT software hardware, we would add seventy-five thousand dollars. There's no additional, nothing added to the software. We would ask for this new account that we're planning, that we would suggest get made. This new capital account for road resurfacing to to fund that with five hundred thousand dollars. Now, that is a total of. I'm gonna just page it, I'm gonna tell you. I think it's one million four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Okay. The concept, as I said, is to take money from the fund balance. Money, as Bob suggested already, is already taxed. Take it and fund these accounts that way. That would relieve all the money that goes into those accounts right now from the, from the Selectmen budget, could be as much as two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And you could use that money for other things. You could possibly think about reducing taxes with it. It just will be money you wouldn't have to spend from the Selectmen budget to go into these capital accounts. Those capital accounts will be funded from the fund balance. At the current level right now, the General, the General Fund balance is five billion two hundred sixty-four thousand four hundred seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. I don't even wanna write that. You better come down there.
Right off the bat.
You guys have the thing that he's looking at in your papers also. Sorry, I should've mentioned that before.
Let's see, I'm not the only one that's separating.
Well, okay.
This is the one, that's the one.
Oh, it's blue too.
I've got a lot of time on this, okay? I have five minutes.
I think we're gonna go on the next page, Bob. What's the page number? Go through the page. There, that's where I am. Okay? Current total of General Fund balance is the five billion two sixty-four four oh seven point thirty-nine. We are obligated to take fifteen percent of our annual budget, which is one million seven hundred fifty-five thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars and seventy cents. For a rainy day account.
Well, that, yeah, that's in case the world ends.
That that is, that is not mandated by the state, it is highly suggested. That would leave you a balance, if you did that, would leave you a balance of unassigned money of three thousand, uh, three million, five hundred nine thousand two twenty-five sixty-nine. The amount of growth last year was four hundred eighty-eight thousand two hundred three dollars and eighteen cents.
Can you explain the growth a little bit? I wish you would at the mo- this moment.
Yeah, so, what, like I was explaining earlier. When the budget season comes up, we propose not only what to spend in a year for expenses for every department for the Board of Selectmen. And the Board of Education, we also propose revenues, what we expect to take in for revenues for the year. So for this last year, as of June thirtieth, the combination of. Extra revenue that we took in over what we proposed and then coming in under budget. Um, that's, I think it was three hundred and seventy thousand for extra revenues and then it was a hundred and. Eight thousand for expenses, something, somewhere around there. The total was four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars that we ended up um, having as extra.
Goes directly to the fund balance. And, um, this is fairly common in, I mean, historically is common. I mean, we got this big group several years ago, we hired a, a collection agency to go around, collect all the back taxes. And then the, the General Fund went up a lot in that, but we also have all that, all these accounts with some interest gathered, right?
Yes. So last year, we um, estimated that we were gonna take a hundred thousand dollars in for interest. We took in about two hundred and twenty thousand. So that's a hundred and twenty thousand extra right there. Judy's worked very hard to get some back taxes in from people. Um, their back taxes paid, so that was a little bit of a boost in the revenues. And then we've had a lot of million-dollar sales in Sterling. So, um, Heather in Town Clerk's office has taken in quite a bit of money extra also that we didn't account for. We didn't know that we were gonna have multiple million-dollar sales.
Hmm.
So, it's a combination of the fees that were taken in, that we just took extra fees in, um, getting back taxes taken in. I think Judy said we took in more current taxes than what we were estimating, so we took in a little bit more of that. The interest was taken in, that was extra, and so on and so forth on the revenue um, reports.
Go ahead, did you run number six, right? The total, the total amount of money that we would be taking from the fund balance to put money into these capital accounts and create this new one. Would be one million four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. That would leave us a balance, an unassigned balance of two million eighty-four thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. And um, explain number eight for me, would you please?
Do you have to be on there?
Number eight?
Yeah, so this, number eight is the total um, fund balance, including the fifteen percent. So if you throw the fifteen percent into.
Oh, okay.
After the capital transfers.
You add the two million eighty-four and add the one seven. Alright, I'm gonna go try it back. Again, that one point seven five five is fifteen percent of the annual budget. Our annual budget is approximately twelve million dollars between the school and the town.
Right.
Take fifteen percent of that and you come up with one million seven hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Again, it's not mandated, it's just, it would be, it would be extremely foolish. Well, not to do that, especially with money, this, we have this kind of money available.
It also keeps your credit rating.
Oh, absolutely.
Um, that keeps you.
I'm sure it plays our money. I'm sure it does. So that's a given. As far as I'm concerned, that, if I were your shoes, I wouldn't even contemplate not doing that. So that's why we start there, work from there down.
And this is gonna be strictly for roads?
That one account would be strictly for roads.
The new account, the new.
The new, the new capital account, if the town, this would have to go through you, would have to go to a town meeting and the town would have to vote on it. And because it's a new way to fund this, these finance, these are capital accounts. But all the capital accounts, if this were to go through the way I've suggested, would be funded from the fund balance and not from the budget.
That isn't to say that it would have. That isn't to say that it would have to be imperfect to it. It means that we're doing it this year. We may not use all your folks' road funds very possible next year. It's possible that we won't have to put as much in the following year.
Right.
So the same goes for all the accounts, right? That we may not drain them. They're still accruing interest. Uh, and, you know, they would be growing. Um, but also, I, we, we would have, we should have um, Board of Finance oversight about these transfers every year.
Okay.
And watch the fund balance, see how the fund balance is doing. Watch the tax, you know, income we're getting from taxes and make sure that the mix still results with a, a, an extremely favorable, positive balance. So it isn't like we're, we're planning to drain surplus or the fund balance totally, even back down to the fifteen percent. What we're doing is to try to mitigate how much we have to drag out of the taxpayers. We're doing things we have to do anyway. And using growing funds that are sitting there. Nothing, do, doing, you know, just getting larger every year to pay for these things rather than new taxes. To me, it sort of makes sense.
Let me see, so we see the difference. No, I see it the same way. It just, I think we have to understand, we're asking to create an account. But strictly for road resurfacing, this is not road maintenance. This is road resurfacing only. We're asking for five hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance to do that. And as Bob said, that doesn't mean a year from now, my successor is going to come to you and say, we need to put five hundred thousand back in there. You know what I'm saying? Because come this winter, when that, when the road work is all decided on. You have to remember, we get approximately three hundred thousand dollars from the state, from two different accounts that can be used for roads and traditionally is. So you can start with three hundred thousand. You might only take two hundred of that five hundred thousand. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And there's not, like, Bob said, there's no need to think that a year from now, someone's going to come back and say, well, we need to take five hundred thousand more from the fund balance. That probably won't have to happen. It's a matter of keeping track of all of that, keeping track of your expenses and working out the best deal you can possibly do for, for road resurfacing. If that price is going to go up every single year, it's just that when, we happen to be in a situation right now where we don't, because of the road work we've been done, we've done in the last ten years, we don't have any more long roads to do. Knock right away. That doesn't mean sooner or later you want to do them, of course you will. But we have a number of short roads, I say a mile or less. Those are far less expensive to do than to tackle a road like the road that I live on, which is being done as we speak or during the day. Um, that's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar one just by itself. And that's, that's not asphalt. That is a chip seal. And we don't have a lot of those roads left. We have mostly short roads. So I'm saying the cost of road resurfacing won't be as expensive as it was this year. And, um, it just, like I said, if you could, you have that money there. Every bit of it's got to go through the town, it's going to go through the town meeting. After it goes through you, you have to go through a town meeting. So it's just, um.
The people will speak on it.
It just, but it's a different way of funding those funds, those, um, capital funds.
With a little bit of history attached, just a few years ago, um, we couldn't get a budget passed. And so even though we were sitting on a four million dollar fund balance, we couldn't do any roads, right? That, that year, or we did it all half, half baked a little bit. It, it just, it just smacks of, um, um, almost insanity that the people are sitting on four billion dollars and they have to look at the road outside their house and it's all full of holes and bumps, you know? We should be able to take care of what everybody uses in this town. Everybody uses the road.
So our suggestion is to, once again, fund those standing accounts, revaluation, facilities maintenance, equipment, buses, vans and IT hardware. Fund them with money from the fund balance and create a new account, road resurfacing and fund that as well.
Okay, so. And you've arrived at these other account levels based on the issue of their expenditures.
Yeah.
And.
You can see the level in the, uh, you look at the second line. Facilities maintenance. Again, that account, that, that account is used to pay repair work on all the town buildings. We have four primary town buildings. This building, the Gumbert Building and the industrial park, the town garage and the school. So we're down to a hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars in that account. Most of the large expenses have been taken care of on all four of those buildings. That's why we're thinking if we put five hundred thousand dollars into it, we have a little more cushion there.
I think that it, the, the interesting thing about putting larger numbers up front is that because you've done a lot of work with like the arc funds and all, all that.
You're very fortunate with arc.
Right. That over the years, hence, we, we wouldn't be draining that fund all that much.
The cap, the biggest capital projects have been done. That doesn't mean that something can't go wrong. It's just, and you've got a school now that's reaching the twenty-year stage, which mean most of those, um, warranty issues up there are either have run out or are going to run out shortly. So the potential is there for expenses, but you can't deny the fact the school happens to have a second account.
Yeah.
So it doesn't have to come from here first.
Right.
They might argue that, but nonetheless, that's the game. We're all here in England.
All right. Does the board have any questions about this? Have any, uh, reservations or, you know, about the amounts or about the plan or?
Just one more thing before you decide to sort of think about it a little more. This was all, um, we did this all with the conjunction, conjunction with the lawyer. So Bob and Sarah and I sat down with Rich Roberts, who's our attorney, and he agreed to the concept. And he had a few suggestions to make it, how we should make it happen. He would be willing to write, this requires a new ordinance, by the way. And he would be willing to help him write that ordinance, perhaps write it himself and we could approve it. But, um, it's not, then I just want you all to know that at least we've run this through a legal, someone with legal background who was approved of the idea, suggested, he seems to think it would work fine.
At the meeting, you suggested that we might make this subject to a separate vote. Is that something we're still going to do or not?
You're talking about the extra count?
No, the, the, when, when, at budget time, making capital budget a voteable.
So I think that would be a good idea. So.
I think you did suggest.
Yes.
What I provided you guys here, this table of numbers, this is exactly what I would like to provide with you guys at budget season every year. Um, whether or not we need to actually do the transfers every year is subject to what we use for the accounts, what the needs are. Um, so it might be maybe two accounts on here that we all need to deal. But if you look at the bottom, um, or midway through the page, I gave you little tidbits about how I came to all of these numbers. A lot of these accounts are accounting for multiple years. It's not just one year worth of work.
Right.
And I worked with different departments to come up with these numbers. So it's not just a, I'm going to throw this number at this account. This is a research number. This is a number that, that I spent a lot of time trying to find for you guys.
It's, it's a, uh, it's a transfer that is, is hopefully serves the town for multiple years with one transfer.
This is a long range project.
We've always wanted long range planning.
It may not be as thorough with some other plans that we talked about, but just, this is an attempt at a long range plan, I'll put it that way.
However, my question is, is this, and, and his, he alluded to the fact that we presented it as a separate budget, um, capital budget at, at the, at the town meeting when we vote. That, um, the people would then be able to see exactly where the money's going. And that, and oftentimes that helps them in determining how they vote. Usually when they can see it's going to hard stuff that we need all the time, it gets passed. Whereas sometimes, you know, the selectance budget might not, or the school budget might not. At least the things they need to do can.
Absolutely, like, like transparency about.
Yeah, right. More transparency, more, more information that's condensed to a point where it's not all buried in the whole budget. You can see what we're trying to spend the money on. Especially because we are intending to use surplus funds.
I want to really, right, once again, the money that's in the surplus is already taxed.
Exactly.
If someone has paid taxes on that money already.
Right.
And it just, to me, that, this whole concept seems to make sense. If for no other reason than that.
Maybe it's more fun to tax them again.
You almost have a very short memory from the last people through budget cycle, Robert.
Yeah.
I gotta shed my mouth. So I guess in, in the form of an action, if we are in agreement with this proposal that the Treasurer and the Selectmen have done, it satisfies our purpose of putting already paid taxes to work for all the citizens because by and large, this, the capital stuff is, is the stuff that has to be purchased on a yearly basis. The roads have to be fixed, the buses have to be purchased. They just have to be done. And so I guess if you, if it's, you give to your conclusion, then we're probably looking for a motion to, to move this to a, a town meeting. Under the stipulation that the, the lawyer comes up with the ordinance wording.
Agreed. I see what you're going to do is this is going to be a recommendation from you to the Board of Selectmen. The Selectmen call the town meeting, okay? You have to pass it over. You have to, yes, to make a motion that you agree to this.
Don't move. Motion based second to approve the plan and then pass it on to the Board of Selectmen. And pass it on to the Board of Selectmen. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
No. No, I think this is great.
Okay.
Yeah, if you said no, then you opposed.
We will, um, take this part, we take this subject up at our meeting next Wednesday morning. And we'll, I assume it will, will pass. Should it pass, then we will, we'll set a meeting date for this, town meeting date.
Right.
And this is contingent upon the attorney writing up the.
Yeah, right.
Okay?
Hopefully it's a reading day or something.
All right.
Yes, sir.
You have a question on that whole thing?
You have a question on that one?
During this whole election cycle, is it really a good idea to be changing laws and stuff prior to an election that could hurt candidates versus?
But the Board of Finance, the Board of Finance is, has overlapping members and overlapping pur- purposes for the long term of the town. We're not getting, we don't pay too much attention to the elections because we want to establish policy that's favorable to all citizens for all time. And that transcends elections as far as I'm.
But yeah, but it moves to the Select Board, right? From your position, it moves to the Select Board.
Yep. Well, they have to call a town meeting.
So a town meeting, a town vote?
That's right.
I was just curious, because I think it was just between, it could hurt, you know, prospective candidates if they chose against what other town people thought.
Yeah. Well, any, any, any transfers more than twenty thousand dollars have to go to a town meeting. So yes, this would be an important town meeting. Okay. I mean, let's see, is there anything more on the agenda?
Yes, of course.
Um. Anybody can share what the fact, we don't really have to vote on that, but we have, we have it before us to look at. Are there any questions about this? And while these are something we can glance at, we don't have to vote on, but there's still an item C. Selectmen Board, if you have anything for the report.
Very briefly, we have paving going on at the moment. Port-au-Prince should be done by the end of the week. Um, we've done extensive work on Spring Lake Road to provide drainage for a natural spring that just happens to pop out of some with lawn. And we, we've made a drainage system there that will take care of that. So that road is ready to be paved. It should be started in about in a week, or maybe a week or two. We've had, uh, guardrails put up on the, uh, Snake Meadow Hill Road. We would put that culvert in, we actually had culverts relined. Those, those, um, guardrails are there in place now. We have paving going to go on, on the Lajo Road as well. That's going to get a double layer of chip seal as well. So that takes care of the paving issues. Unfortunately, we've had a visit from Connecticut Ocean. They have had to, uh, they came, came around on a complaint that somebody made, thank you very much, about the, uh, the ceilings in the other wing, um, the, uh, uh, the senior, the senior center, excuse me, the senior center and the clothing bank and a little room around the corner. They've been here twice now. Um, we're waiting for them to come up with a actual, a list of violations. But one thing they insisted on would be to have us do a, an asbestos survey of the building. And we have someone who's going to give us a quote on that tomorrow. And if the quote is suitable, we'll have this done next week. And from that, we're going to learn a lot more about what the condition of the asbestos is in the building. Um, obviously that section of the building was built in nineteen fifty-three. Pretty obvious there's asbestos in that room, those two rooms, um. And anyway, we're going to get that report and we'll go from there. Um, I don't expect this is going to involve a lot of money in terms of the fines, the violations from Ocean because, uh, we met with them twice. They know that we already have had bids on those ceilings to have them replaced. And, uh, that's kind of on hold at the moment until we kind of deal with the asbestos issue. But, um, that's where we're at with that. So. Other than that, things are running along, this is moving.
Yes, sir.
To, to Lincoln?
Yeah.
First time in eight years, I love the road that's going into Port-au-Prince. First time in eight years, a feller that, I won't say what kind of car he drives, that goes by the house about eighty, I seen him come by at twenty-five the other day.
They have to improve it. They did improve it.
That's called a road improvement.
Exactly. Build a hundred, a hundred mile an hour road, they do a hundred. Build the twenty-five mile an hour road.
Blue stones. Well, um, I just want to put it out there to the board that, um, we have had an interesting FOIA experience in town. The Freedom of Information Act has been brought upon us. And following that, we have, all of board chairs in town have been assigned a, uh, email address for the board chair. So we'll be ramping up using that pretty much exclusively after the elections because we will, we're making changes in, in the board probably and other boards as well. So, and we, we, we should start thinking about a little bit more, maybe formally about communication protocols to what we say and how we say it in, you know, in emails. So we're, we're being transparent, but we're, we're not violating anything. I don't know how this is all going to work, but it, and it may have an effect on how we communicate with the offices in town.
All your members could set up Gmail accounts that are just specific for the Board of Finance.
So you're only using them for. So as HR in this, in this building, because I, I have three positions, I'm not just Treasurer, I'm Human Resources and EDC. But as HR in the building, I have made it my mission to help whoever wants to set up a new Gmail. I mean, not many people really know how to use the computer. Not many people are, are adept at getting to Gmail or Google or whatever. Um, so what I've been doing is I've been helping members set up new email addresses through Gmail. Um, getting that on your phone so that you have, um, access to it wherever you go. And it just creates a separate environment for all of the business you guys do for the Ford. So if that's something you wanted to do, uh, just let me know. All I need is your name and your birthday and I can help you guys set that up.
So anyway, that was just some new business. We'll have to just think about, and they have done, working over it. Anything else anybody wants to say or do, or maybe home, go home? A beauty.
Okay.
All right, Reagan?
Motion based second to adjourn, all in favor?
I wanna stay.
You've made you that one.
Take a baby, lay right down here.
Yeah. Your brother will be watching you too.